Scholars meeting in the Harriman City Council November the 6th, 2018 to order. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Wright, followed by a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Councilman Wright?
If you join me, Heavenly Father, we're thankful for what everyone's doing together here tonight, and we thank you for the opportunity to assemble, for the privilege to conduct business on behalf of our citizens. And everything that we do includes your inspiration and wisdom. We ask for your guidance as we make our decisions that affect people's life and welfare. And above all, may we treat others with dignity and respect as your holy teachers. Continue your protection of our workers as they perform their duties. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call it up, please.
Daryl Cook?
Here.
Betty Holly?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Keny Mee?
Here.
Sam Russell?
Here.
Lonny Bright?
Fire Department, any motion to approve the minutes of the October 6th, 2018 meeting? I'll make a motion. Motion by Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cook. Councilman Johnson?
No, sir.
Councilman Cook?
No.
Orders open for discussions, prayers, and amendments. There be none, call it up, please.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonny Bright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any motion to approve the salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Russell?
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly? Councilman Russell?
No, sir.
Councilman Holly? Orders open for discussion. There be none, call it up.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonny Bright?
Yes.
At this time, we're here from delegation. If you'd like to address council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Barry Paulson with Dr. S Entertainment, and just wanted to give an update on the Pirate Fest. But first, I want to thank the city for a good event with the trunk or treat. We participated for the first time in giving out water and soda, candy, and boning props, and so that was a huge event. As far as all the other events combined, we just finished our night festival at the Fisk Site address, and to date, if you include all the people that have come to our festivals, it's almost 20,000 people, 19,700. And so we also train local actors for three or four months before each show, and what's pretty amazing is now some of our actors are turning professional, so we're really proud of them. And I asked them, well, what did they learn and what did they like the most about working at our festivals? And they said the opportunity to learn, to work with the professional acts that we bring in, and to interact with the patrons, and what they liked best was when they personally got a laugh or personally had a good moment or applause where they made a difference. As far as the Tennessee Pirate Fest, we expanded to two weekends, just in case there might be bad weather. And based on license plate data, we found that people came from 15 states. You know, it's a smaller event than the medieval fair, but that was six more states than we had last year. And then people came from 33 Tennessee counties, and that's 10 more counties than last year. So people are coming to Harriman, and it takes about 100 people to put on the shows with all the vendors and the actors and the acts and volunteers, and so we're still not getting the attendance like a pre-event would get. I mean, you're a mob of 5,000 people, you know, but these events are expensive to put on, and so we're still not making it in that way. But obviously, the goal is to be self-sufficient. We're starting to plan the fifth annual Tennessee Medieval Fair. People are calling me already, which is exciting. We're going to do the Live the Age of Chivalry with Robin Hood, so that same kind of theme because we just did it once last year. We decided to move the festivals slightly, where we'll start on Memorial Day, and the reason for that is that's our biggest weekend, but with the Scottish festival and also on high school graduations, it seems like it hurts the first weekend. So we haven't advertised it yet, so if there's any reason not to start on Memorial Day and one for two more weekends, we're just trying to find the right fit with all the different dates. Same thing with the Pirate Fest. And so there's pictures on this page, as far as this was just printed in the City View magazine. The photographer is a professor at Pell City, so that's just been published. And I'd like to thank everybody who came. We're encouraging other people to come. And I'd like to thank VVTV because they had us on twice. We were on VIR into the ATE. We spend a lot of time, a lot of money advertising, and for somehow, we're not quite hitting enough, and so we just will reassess everything. And we just appreciate the opportunity, and we enjoy doing this. It takes a lot of work, but we hope that it will become self-sufficient.
We appreciate you all putting that on, and we appreciate being here in Harriman.
Just something real quick. There's two pirate shows coming to Gatlinburg. One's with Dollywood, and one's another. One's like a music, both are theater, so it's different than what we do, but the fact is shows is a viable concept of they're bringing in some pirate shows in Gatlinburg.
Anybody else like to address council?
Elise Corbin, Cornstalk Heights, and likewise, I would like to report that our haunting of Harriman was quite successful. We're very pleased again this year with the attendance, and I'd like to do a shout-out to Ms. Candice and Hub for supplying the restrooms for us, making those available again this year, and to our chief and to Mr. Tewol for keeping us safe and being our security, part of our security for the evening, as well as our trunk or treat meeting at Cornstalk Heights. It was really good to see you present, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any whales? Well, we'll go into old business. The only item discussing possibly approved final reading on ordinance 1018-01, an ordinance limiting the zoning map of Harriman, Tennessee by rezoning property from R1 to C2. Motion to approve? Motion. Motion by Councilman Russell, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cook? Councilman Russell?
No, sir.
Councilman Cook?
No.
Orders open for discussion. There be none, call it up.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonny Bright?
Yes.
This time, we're here to report, Harriman Utility Board.
Well, I know we've been talking about it for days, but I just wanted to mention one more time how successful the trunk or treat was, how our employees really enjoyed participating in the event, and appreciate the city for supporting it as well and turning it into the major event that it really was. Our new office model is ongoing. We're working on painting the outside of the building, as you can see. We're also renovating throughout the building with new floor and paint, things like that. Our CBG project is our water line replacement project. That's coming to a close in the next few weeks. We've been working at Howard and Barkley Steel and also work near Jerry Duncan Chevrolet. We do have a contract now with, or at least we go ahead now, to pave Burt Street, which the city's agreed to pave half, and then we'll pave the other half, and that'll make that road look a lot better. Hopefully, that pavement will get out there any day now. Our clarifier rehab at the wastewater plant is ongoing. That's mostly a painting and replacement of Burt's job. Just briefly wanted to mention, I don't know if this was mentioned last month, but there was two white poles that were hit near Christmas Lumber or Long Run Street. Those have been ordered. It just takes several weeks to get those in. Back to the new office for a moment, and we just let you guys know there will be an ATM there. We have an agreement with Enrichment Federal Credit Union to provide an ATM where our regions used to have their ATM in the drive-through lane. That'll be available to citizens. And then lastly, we're going to have another surplus option on GovDeals. Just let the public know about that. We'll have a few old vehicles and some miscellaneous equipment and items. That's all for HUB. Any questions?
Do you have anything for HUB?
Thank you.
I'd just like to echo what you said. The trunk or treat was great. We appreciate you all starting it a couple of years ago, and I hope that you'd echo that to your employees, Connie and the rest of them that started this, but it was way more overwhelming than I think anybody anticipated it being, and it's great when you run out of candy, except for the kids. But next year, we'll be ready, and we appreciate what you've done. That's all I've heard is people talking about the trunk or treat. It's the biggest one anywhere around here, so, you know, that is, the other things that we're doing, that is putting Harriman back on the map, and we appreciate y'all letting this partner in with you all. Fire Department?
You guys got my report for this Tracer video out, too, guys. It's been a very busy month with the fire department, being in schools for fire safety stuff, prayer days, all daycares. We made that just a point of the month, do the fire safety month, the trunk or treat thing. HUB went in with us as far as going to the schools and talking about gas and gas leaks and all that stuff. We partnered with them for the kids to take that information home to their parents. Also, we could reach them that way, just trying to combine stuff and make our citizens a lot safer than what they are. The firefighter memorial, we done the dedication. I know a lot of you guys done had plans and stuff, but I just wanted to get it done before the weather got bad. Everything went great with it. I hope you stay tuned to ride down by there and look at it. I'm very proud of it, and I'm very proud of the men, the fire department, all the work they put into it. They put a lot of hours in it, and that's about all I got. I'll take any questions as I got, and I appreciate everything that you do for my department.
Do you have anything for the fire chief? You got any hot dogs?
Oh, man, we can get some.
Police Department?
You have our monthly stats for October in front of you. Next month, I will try to get them to you, the Friday before the meeting. It's just kind of hectic coming up with all this stuff, but we're going to try that. We did add the monthly training into it this time, who's been to training and whatnot, and also, I'd like to mention that HUB had donated some money to us for a project we're working on, and if it's okay with the council if they'll approve it, I'd like to put that money in the drug fund. If I have any questions.
Any questions? You going to introduce the new lieutenant to everybody?
This is Lieutenant Daryl Wonby. He come over from Anderson County to the police department two weeks ago.
Fine fella. Good to be here. Good to walk home because of you.
Parks and Rec?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted, first of all, to give a very personal thank you to the mayor, Councilman Russell. I was in my personal truck a long time this summer. It was sitting in the garage, and you guys led me in the right direction, got it back overnight, so we got my work truck back, and my guys, we got their work truck back, so we're able to get out there and get our jobs done a little bit better, so thank you. Administratively, what I've got going on, we've got basketball sign-ups. We've got, to this point, we've got three more days left to sign-ups, and we've got 180 kids. Looking like we're going to have teams from four-year-olds, 17-year-old senior boys again this year, so we invite you all, on that note, everybody in this meeting tonight as a responsible adult, so if you got any free time, know somebody in your church, somebody in your family, that's a responsible, mature adult that can be a role model for our kids. We do need some volunteers to sign us to coach. RFPs have went out. Kevin got that out to some of the local contractors today, request for a proposal or putting a new roof on the community center over there. Hopefully, we get that thing. I said it's getting really bad. The last ever ring we had is starting to leak in new places. Now, Drac don't even know where some of these leaks are. Now, we've got some new leaks in here, kids' leaks, but we're going to get that thing fixed, hopefully, in the near future. Some things my crew are doing, we're going to get rid of our yellow carpets in our parks, getting up the leaves, working coordination with Drac, getting those leaves out of our parks. Also, whenever we get some dry weather, we're going to crown a couple of our bot fields. Going to start with one of the fields at Flower Mill Flats. We're going to work on Meta View Park and South Harriman Drac's track, getting it crowned off. And I want to thank Drac. He went and guided us, 10-ton of riprap, 10-ton of gravel, to work on a drainage system we're going to put in on the field, too. And we got a new hire. One was hired on last Friday and interviewing another in the morning, and those going to be the two part-time positions that you guys approved quite a lot of that. So that's all I've got. Anybody got any questions?
How many players did you have? How many people did you have signed up last year?
Probably around that. I can have, and I'll have a breakdown of our last three or four seasons.
Okay.
Thanks, ma'am.
Glad to be here for your speaking. Appreciate it, sir. Public Affairs?
Yes, Mayor. We've got some hatching done on the south end of 4 Lane. We cleared out Island Drive, getting ready to pave it this week, weather big, and south little strip down there across 4 Lane, finding a reason to be paved it. Cut five trees down here at House Bill. We cleared short Front Street here off of Margrave and Oak Hill. Five loads of junk, and we still having problems out Bowls of Town picking dumping. Picked up a few little dirt today, and that's about it.
Do you have anything to say?
Could we not get some trail cams, some reasonably not very expensive ones, and set them up at these places with these people's dumping that stuff? I mean, I'll go out there and set them up. Go ahead.
David came by today, and he put a trail cam out in one of those spots today, so he does have one, and I don't know about.
Because I'm telling you, you want to catch, if they're doing it in a certain area constantly, you put one of them out there, get one of the infrared ones where it won't flash, and you'll find out who's doing it. Because I can't stand people throwing stuff out on the ground like that. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Library?
We had four Halloween parties at the library, and they were full, and we also had a costume party, but it was, we dress up as the characters, the favorite character out of the book, and do a little report on it. I mean, they had a lot of fun with that. The homeschool program is where we're really, of course, the first of course, has always been good. I had fun with the truck or treat. That was a lot of fun, and yes, I went and got candy twice. I still, well, having a play this Saturday, it's Wonderful Life, it's at the American Legion, and the doors open at 6:30, and it starts at 7:00. It's a radio version of it, so hopefully, everybody can come out and get their hearts and mind in the spirit system, because it should be really good. We have new books, new Christian fiction books, and we've got large print on order in audio, and then some of the top bestsellers, and thank you to Cornstalk Heights, because we also have a new magazine rack, a new custom dealt magazine rack along with some custom dealt bookcases in the library. Come on up, stop by and see them. They look real good. For play, there is a $10 charge, but we will have dessert and drinks and whatever money is made besides what you pay for the actors, or go for a building we've been working on to get the children supplies in. And we also have an author, a local author. She grew up around here, but she moved to Florida, and she called me, which I had heard about her books, it's called the Chancy Series, and she's going to come November the 19th at 4:00 on Monday. She'll be in for Thanksgiving, so she's going to come and sign books and also talk about writing, and if you might want to become an author, how to go about publishing books. So that's pretty much covered what we've got going on.
Go ahead, Dr. Curly.
We finished our internal onsite audit about a month ago. I think we're waiting on a few things from HUB, but we'll have that finished. Should be, I'm supposed to get a copy this Friday, so. In addition, our tax notices have gone out, and we've started collecting taxes already, and I expect this month will be pretty large, because it normally is the largest collection month for taxes, so that's it.
You have anything to say, Dr. Curly? Your attorney?
Since early October, I had a court hearing with Daryl Morgan on the delinquent tax suit, and the chancellor agreed, he didn't have subject matter jurisdiction because the taxes hadn't been paid, and the statute says you have to pay your taxes before you get in the plane. So about the week after that, Daryl Morgan paid his taxes under protest, but that kind of automatically dismisses the delinquent tax suit. And talking with the city tax attorney, I filed a motion with the court just to confirm that it was dismissed, and if he wants to protest his taxes, he needs to power separately. Mr. Morgan hasn't done that yet. I haven't seen anything. And I'll give a hearing to confirm my motion to dismiss the delinquent taxpayer case, since the taxes were paid.
Go ahead, your attorney. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Trailing?
Fifty things I'll try to run through quickly. If you have questions, I'll be glad to try and take those. First of all, I want to express my appreciation to the garden club and to Amy Russell in particular. She has been working with me and trying to outline some areas within the city where we could plant some delgued trees to replace some larger trees that we have lost over time, and try to make the downtown area look a little better, so that's something we'll be working on over the next six weeks or so. Some of you may have noticed the ground disturbances at the intersection of Walden Street and Debonia. Just to let you know, we do have one of the decorative lights that are supposed to go at that location, ties into the lights that are running down Debonia Street. Initially, we had the light in stock until someone ran over one of them, and so that happened to be the one that we pulled out of surplus and used to put the light back on Run Street. The light to replace that one has been on order for quite some time, but it is about an eight to 10 week lead time to get those lights in, so as soon as it comes in, HUB will be installing that for us. They rewired the whole section of line along Debonia Street so that it no longer ties into the hospital for the power source for those lights. The mayor had mentioned something previously about doing a new strategic planning session in the coming months. I did reach out to Warren Neve with MTAAS, who, over the last few years, has been the one that has facilitated those sessions for us, and so he is checking his calendar and going to be submitting some dates that I'll send out to the council and let you guys look at, so that we can try to get something set up several weeks out, so everyone will have plenty of time and notice to prepare for that. Also, at the TCMA meeting last week where I spoke with Warren, I also had the opportunity to meet the person, the Main Street Coordinator, or the Coordinator of the Main Street Program, and explain to them that Harriman might have some interest in becoming a part of that program, and so she said that they would be glad to send their representative down from the state, that if the mayor, the council, if we're willing to get any local businesses or business owners together, nonprofit groups, whoever we think might fit into that program going forward together, at one time, they would be happy to send someone down and talk about the program and what the benefits are and what you anticipate the expenses to be for that program going forward, and they can give some examples of how other communities have been able to use that program positively for different efforts that they have done within their communities. November 14th and 15th of this month, I will be in Chabney again for TDOT training. This is mandatory training that at least one employee in the city must have. It has to be done once every three years. It expires after three years. Mine expired at the last month, and so for all these grants that we're working on, CMIC, the Margrave Drive Project, the Transportation Alternatives Program, you have to have those certifications to be able to get those funded. Also, we have some very preliminary design plans on the Margrave Project. It's what they call a 30% design. That's something fairly new that TDOT is doing, where they ask the consultants to take the design to what they estimate to be 30% of full design, submit it to TDOT, let them review it, and give a comment back before seeing them, the full design. That just helps us head off any issues that TDOT may have with the project earlier on, rather than getting to the end where you think is a complete design that you can implement and TDOT have any problem with some of the components and not being willing to fund. So I would anticipate that next week, we'll be sending that 30% design up to TDOT for them to take a look at. Once we get that back with our comments, we'll begin to add the details to the design, which I think is where local individuals will have interest in what's going to take place. That's all I have. If you got any questions?
Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'm like, 30% design, does that have what they're planning on doing for traffic coming in, or is that half their next phase? I mean, are they going to put the narrow places and all that?
Yeah, for the most part, that would be in the next phase. It would only be in this phase if what they were proposing is going to require adding additional right-of-way or something like that.
Right, I was just wondering why they're talking about putting that baby roundabout in there and that type of stuff. Is that part of it?
The smaller roundabouts would not, because they should be able to fit within the existing right-of-way. If you were doing a full-fledged roundabout, it would be in the project at this point, because you would have to have a new right-of-way.
Do they have something to say? Thanks. This time, we're here from the council. Councilman Cook?
Just like I say, it was great to see the tremendous support of the council and the community, I mean, the trunk or treat, the utility board, the police department had several officers there, fire department, I mean, I didn't even get a hot dog that night.
I didn't either, though.
But it was a great event, and I appreciate everybody coming out and supporting the city like they did, and some of the videos the city shared from one of my officers, I thought there was a lot of reviews and stuff on those. Thanks for sharing those videos. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Just got something quick. Thanks for Allison pointing out that one of those faucets down there at the park was leaking, and I had called Allen right after she told me, and they fixed it real quick, so thanks for letting me know. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Russell? Councilman, Councilman Holly?
No, sir.
I've got a couple of announcements. The Mary Street this year will be on the 20-
on the twenty-seventh of November, uh, back down at the Temperance Building. Um, it's at seven o'clock, six o'clock, six o'clock, uh, on the twenty-seventh. Parade is the twenty-ninth, uh, on that Thursday. Uh, it's always the first Thursday after Thanksgiving, so it's the twenty-ninth. And, uh, there's open house, uh, downtown merchants will be having an open house, uh, next Friday and Saturday. So, um, make the next one, sixteen, seventeen, next Friday and Saturday, uh, downtown. Uh, there'll be carolers back down, uh, on the Saturday from Rome State. Uh, so, you can come down and, and be a part of it. Um, Drac, if you would, let Kingston know. We appreciate them coming over. Uh, this is big help on the trunk or treat. Uh, our truck is down, sweeper, so they came over and, uh, helped clean our streets up and we really appreciate that. Uh, anytime we ask them to come, they're always right here to help and, uh, we appreciate what they do for us. Uh, also, I've got a, uh, one of our representatives on the county commission, you're in hearings here tonight. Glad to have you tonight. I appreciate you coming. Uh, I think that's all I got. All right, we're gonna fly through this thing. There's an election tomorrow, right? First item, discussing possibly approved, typically obliged, Tommy Ghost and Ghost has packaged liquor, sixteen twenty-five South Rome Street, Harriman, Tennessee, three-seven-seven-four-eight.
Motion to approve? Motion. Motion by Counselman Russell, second. Or Counselman Wright? Uh, Counselman Russell. Counselman Russell. Everything was done. Chief, I'm checking out. Floor is open for discussion. I'll go, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holland?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonny Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved truck equipment bill. Kevin, what trucks?
That's on the, uh, new truck that we purchased in last year's budget, uh, the canvas, cause the cab and chassis. This would be the, um, dump bed and the snow and salt attachments.
Motion to approve. Move. Second. Counselman Wright, second. Counselman Johnson, Counselman Wright. Johnson? Counselman Johnson.
Yes.
Floor is open for discussion.
So, everything you sent out, big phone goes on this truck from this. It'd be very helpful.
Yes, um, they, it's, uh, it's within budget, uh, twenty-eight-six-twenty-eight. And, uh, they estimated that they would have it done within forty-five to sixty days, uh, timeframe. Um, and it is the equipment that, uh, a couple works for Interlangue and specified. Uh, we did, uh, advertising in the, uh, paper. And, um, uh, this is the, uh, one deal that we received, uh, for the.
Getting the snow dogs set up.
Any other discussion? Call it over, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holland?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, I'm gonna hold off till the next meeting. Uh, still waiting on the person to get back to me. Uh, next item, discussing possibly approved ordinance one-one-one-eight-dash-zero-one, an ordinance to establish the Harriman Police Advisory Commission. Move. Second. Motion by Counselman Wright, second. With Counselman Russell, Counselman Wright. Second. Counselman Russell? Yes, sir. Floor is open for discussion. Ben, call it over, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holland?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonny Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved ordinance one-one-one-eight-dash-zero-two, an ordinance to establish the Harriman Fire Advisory Commission. Motion. Second. Motion by Counselman Russell, second. With Counselman Cook, Counselman Russell. Yes, sir. Counselman Cook? No. Floor is open for discussion. Call it over, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holland?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved ordinance one-one-one-eight-dash-zero-three, an ordinance amending the Harriman City Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Motion to approve. Motion. Counselman, Counselman Wright. Second. Second. With Counselman Russell, Counselman Wright.
This is the main one that's different. Does this start, we're picking up with everybody that's on there, uh, with the terms and stuff. Let's just make them a little to.
Floor is open for discussion. Call it over, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holland?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Yes. Motion approved. Next item, discussing possibly approved ordinance one-one-one-eight-dash-zero-four, an ordinance to establish the Harriman Public Works Advisory Committee. Move. Motion by Counselman Wright? Second. Second. With Counselman Johnson, Counselman Wright. Counselman Johnson? Floor is open for discussion. Call it over, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holland?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to approve. Next item, discuss and possibly approve ordinance one-one-one-eight-dash-zero-five, an ordinance amending the Harriman Emery Golf Course Advisory Committee. Motion. Motion by Counselman Russell? Second. Second. With Counselman Cook, Counselman Russell. Yes, sir. Counselman Cook. Floor is open for discussion. Call it over, please.
Darryl Cook? Betty Holland?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Keny Mee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonny Wright?
Yes.
Motion approved. Told you we'd fly through that. Uh, anything else need to come for this council? Most of the yard, there's, second. All in favor, Wright? Aye. Close lock, sign.